We would now like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for February 27, 2019. And we'll all stand, please, and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America through the Republic of Georgia's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, everyone, please look at Letter B, the Consent Agenda. Would you please cross out number three, which is the approval of the January 19 minutes? And notice the addition of number four, the approval of the 10:10 and the 11:14 City Council meetings. And I would like a motion, please, to pass the agenda.
We'll make a motion, passage, Consent Agenda with the changes we brought forward.
Second. All those in favor?
Can we have discussion?
Oops. Sure, discussion, sorry.
I would propose on C if we could move the discussion up ahead of the two motions on the Planning Commission report, so we could talk about that ahead of the recommendation.
I have no problem. Do we have to vote on that, or?
You should, yes, you should amend the agenda by a vote of the council. So that would be a motion in the form of a motion.
Does everyone understand what she's asking for?
No.
I'm just suggesting moving the discussion up ahead of the two motions by the Planning Commission, so we could talk about that in advance.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add? Then would someone like to make a motion that we, a motion in the second, that we change the order?
I move that we change the order.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, then we'll consider that moved up. So then at this time, we'll go to letter C, and I guess we'll begin with...
There's a motion on the floor for Consent Agenda.
All right, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda with the addition? Any more discussion? We've already discussed. Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
That's what confused me, we had one on the table and we changed another one, so...
So now we're all, we're good?
Because we didn't...
All right. We're also whipped up about our new high V that we can't focus. So anyway, so now what we'll do is go to letter C, number eight, but we're going to take the discussion and proposed worksheet residential zone district, pages 26 to 31. Shall I have the Planning Commission representative come up for that discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Ron, would you please come up? And we're on pages 26 and 31.
Certainly, if she'll behave.
I'll try.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and others. Do you want me to start off?
We're going to do the discussion.
Let's talk about the discussion, the discussion of the residential worksheet workshop, the proposed worksheet residential zone businesses. As you know, at the last meeting, we had two IUP applications. And in the ordinance, I believe I'm correct, but if I'm not, when you ask for an IUP, in the ordinance, it says for a period of one, two, five years. So we would like to, some board members would like to discuss with you guys, with everyone. There's been some proposals that when someone comes for their initial IUP, instead of granting a five-year interim use permit right off the bat, that either we could grant a one-year, or a two-year, or a three-year, or a five-year, whatever. And the reason that was discussed for that is when someone in Columbus is issued an interim use permit, that's a privilege, they're opening a small business of type, of some type, in a residential area. It's a privilege for them to do it. If we didn't have the IUP procedure, they would have to go rent a building somewhere or buy other property or something. This gives these people with an idea, a chance to start something small. But I think, in my mind, the bottom line is, they can do it if it's invisible to their neighbors. I think that's some interpretation we'll get. So if you start a quilting business in the back room, that's invisible. If you bring in three bobcats and a snow blower and a, you know, step ladder and all of this, that's, it can be invisible if you agree, understand, and are willing to put it where it's supposed to be, you know, out of sight, stored in buildings, stored behind a berm, stored, whatever. And that's all laid out in our ordinances. But if, by going down instead of an automatic five-year, if we say, you can have a one-year or a year and a half to come in, get your application, get your business started, have time to, for the applicant to see that it's working, or if there has to be some changes. Or for the neighbors, he comes in and dumps a dump truck load of junk in the yard and all the neighbors are smelling it and he's working at 5:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, then instead of having to put up with it for five years, at the one-year, two-year mark or three-year mark, he comes back in for his reapplication, and it can be discussed with the staff and the attorney and the police or whoever needs to be discussed with. And you can, it helps hold, it helps staff hold these people a little bit more accountable with some of the discussion. So would anyone like to join in on the discussion? I think I've, that's my take of it. Anybody else want to add or subtract or whatever?
I'd be willing to. So I just put together a little proposal. One of the things that I was working on with staff was to develop a more comprehensive IUP application that would ask for more specific information. And as I was working on that, it made me think that it made sense to have the first application, or the first time period for the application be one year, one year from the time that it would be approved. And then the applicant would come back the second year and with that, submit another application. And the purpose for that would be that it would allow for that applicant to prove themselves, that they truly can operate invisibly and that they aren't, you know, creating a negative impact to their neighbor. It also, I think, helps that they would be in business for a year and perhaps some things that they hadn't thought about in that first-year application would then become apparent to them, and they could include that in the second year, and that would be more information for the city to consider. You know, the downside of that is that it means coming back in a year, it means paying the application fee twice. And, you know, it's more work for the staff to process two applications, but I also think it gives the city the upper hand in case you do have a applicant that's noncompliant or where they're impacting the neighbors in a negative way. So I just thought it was worth raising that as a consideration, and I'm interested to hear what others think about that.
Right, council, what do you think? Any opinions?
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think a year might be too short, maybe 18 months, two years maybe. And I'd like to see application fees, what are they now for application?
$200.
$200, that's it?
And then they have to give an escrow of $1,500 for expenses incurred for the consultants to draft reports or answer any questions associated with the residential zone business.
Would they need that fee the second time? If it's a year and a half, two years out, would they need the $2,000, whatever that was?
Planner's report would still have to be drafted once again for, and it's a new application process, so we would still go through the public hearing process, and we would still have a planner's report based on the submittal that was submitted to the city. So if there was any changes or any changes to their business, they would have a new narrative or a new site plan if things had changed, and that would have to be reviewed again.
You would think with all complaints on that project, it'd be, it was more streamlined, be easier to do it the second time? You wouldn't think you'd need all that?
Elizabeth, please clarify. So whatever is not used of the $1,500, what is returned to the applicant, right?
Correct. So it's an escrow, so we take it for associated expenses related to that particular application. So depending on what consultant we use or what issue came up, because I can never tell what's going to come up, because when you have a public hearing, neighbors will come in and they'll, they'll say different things. So there might be a legal question, there might be an engineering question, there might be a planning question. So it's really whatever associated bills that we get from consultants that we use against that escrow. So say we only have $600 worth of bill, then they'll, they'll get the other $900 back in a refund within six months to a year.
I was hoping that this first year would be more like a probationary period and not necessarily a whole new full monty.
Well, well, an interim use permit is given for a certain term, so, and that term expires. So there isn't what I would call a renewal process, it actually terminates. So if you, if you issue a permit for one year, it terminates, and the idea is that they apply again. So it's not a renewal, it's, that's not the, that would be a license and other types of forms that actually renew. This terminates. So you actually get a new one, you know, a new interim use permit with a new sunset date. So it just, that's the way it operates, which is why you need a brand-new permit to be submitted. And it's given to a business or a person, not the land. This is a permit that does not run with the land. So if they move, it automatically terminates.
But I think the intent is similar to what you just said, is that that first year or year and a half, whatever the term ends up being, would be a time period that they would basically prove that they could be compliant with the conditions of the IUP and operate invisibly. And I think, you know, I think the, if the initial application doesn't change significantly the second time around, then I would assume most of that escrow would be returned back, and it would be essentially the $200 fee, which probably covers your time and the cost of posting the public hearing and those sorts of things. So that's probably, I would guess, pretty much eating up most of that $200. I don't know how much you could reduce that the second year.
The, the $200 doesn't really come close to the postage, the time, the, the public hearing minutes, I mean, all of the things that we incur as staff. The $1,500 is strictly for consultant time. So yeah, we're, there's really not a whole lot of margin, if any, in the $200.
You're above and beyond the $200 just by doing the publishing and the paperwork that goes with it. And I would like to also say, board members, so this is the first, soon as we get to it, the first two IUPs of the new board. And that's why we moved it up to the top, so we could come to some kind of consensus and, and move forward from that point, and not do somebody else and then change it and then have somebody say, well, you've already set precedent, whatever. So keep talking, Wood.
Jesse?
Yep.
I'd like to see it two years to the one year. Is one year, you don't know if the business is going to survive. Two years, you've got a chance of making it work. In two years, it's easy to, you know, in two years, you should hold any complaints or anything that they should not be renewed.
Anybody else have any number in mind?
I have a comment. Mr. Mayor and council, so this is, this would become a practice, not a code matter. So you could grant up to five years. Essentially, you're giving, with this statement, you're giving folks notice that the council, as a practice, may limit you to two years. That doesn't prevent you from granting five for exceptional circumstances, it doesn't stop you from granting less. I do think it, it would be good practice, even if you decide to limit tonight's IUPs to two years, that you get some feedback from Planning Commission as well, because most planning matters, council refers to Planning Commission for some discussion.
Do the whole council, the next Planning Commission meeting, or just?
Right. I'm not saying that you can't limit it to two years tonight, that's, that's always your prerogative, because the code says up to five years. So you can limit it tonight, but I think as a, as a practice, even tonight and going forward, that if you have changes to how you process interim use permits, it's good to get feedback from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Planning Commissioners, what do you think? We would like some feedback.
I guess the senior member will start. I think it's a good idea, because we do get a lot of complaints, and we get them after the fact. It is a privilege, and it does need to be under wraps. I have a relative, I'll just relay on a personal note, living in my neighborhood, I think I might have a little bit of excavation trucks on my block now, you know? I've been watching them for a couple days, but if they're, you know, all of them trucks are parked, and that's going to become apparent real quick. So I mean, I think it's something to really look at. I do have a question for Bill, if that's okay? Are we able to, you know, nobody wants to pay twice if you're compliant, you're following all the rules. Is there ever a, if they come back in in a year, like a tier system of payment? You know, instead of having to go through the whole, I know you said there's a sunset date, but like, they come back in, they're perfect. Is there a different process we could put them through, you know, that they don't have to go through all the paperwork? Or legally, do we have to start from the beginning?
Mr. Mayor and council, the, legally, we'd have to treat it as a new application. The, the alternative would be to change the code to provide for a probationary period of two years, and then if there are no complaints or problems, that that could be extended. But that would be a code change. So if you're going to act tonight to establish a two-year initial term, that can be done without a code amendment, but what you've described, Pam, is, is something that would take a code amendment.
Thank you.
I have just one question. Would that mean that you'd have to have another public hearing?
Yes, correct.
So you'd have more public hearings?
Correct.
Okay.
May we have an opinion, counselor? What is, is it better off to do the, wait until the change, or just put a two-year term on it, or three-year, whatever's chosen?
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm not uncomfortable with the council deciding tonight to put a two-year term on an interim use permit, because the code is written in such a way that it allows you to do that. I think you could have a fuller discussion of how you look at alternatives, maybe after tonight, or maybe after the first round of permits go through. In other words, do you want to adopt a probationary concept? Do you want to have a tier structure? The easiest thing for you to do is to set a, a term tonight. Rational has been given, I think it's important for the minutes to contain that rationale as, as you adopt the motion, so that it's clear why you're, you're going from a five-year to a two-year. But I, but I am comfortable that you can do that, and it's in your authority to do that tonight.
Thank you. All right, council, then, we've established that we can do it. We've established, I think everybody is not against doing it. So then it's just the term, how long, how long should we do it? Five years, we think, is too long. One year is not very long, because by the time you apply, get all the paperwork done, two or three months have gone by, correct? So then actually, is first year, a one-year deal is actually only nine months of being in business?
It is, it is true. I'm just thinking of, of process, usually that's what goes through my mind is, and I realize that we're, we're looking at an initial application, we're not looking at subsequent applications. So I don't think, whether your guidance, I don't want, I don't think you should limit yourself, because the first time, if you gave them two years, then they come in two years later, you still want the ability to give them five years if there was no issue. So, so I do think that, you know, whether, whether it's tiered, I do think you have to articulate, because I want to be able to tell people upfront before they, they get before you, because I don't want any, them to figure out there's any surprises. So I think whatever we decide as a group, as far as one year or two years for your initial, that we get that out into the checklist or somewhere else so that they're put on notice. And then subsequent permits, if there's no issue, you would be willing to give longer terms.
That's correct. Can you, can you clarify, can you do one year from the date of approval, or does it have to be from the date of the application?
I think we've always done approval.
Right. It's from approval, and I think the, the reference to, it would be, you'd be reapplying before that permit is up in order to get the renewal.
I see, so that's where you get...
So within nine months, you're probably thinking about a reapplication, so you don't lose that.
Okay.
Which is maybe why the, the two-year would be a little more flexible than, than a one-year.
And less painful financially. I mean, they get an extra six, eight months before they have to start the paperwork process.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject a statement here? There's two things, there's new business and there's noncompliant. So there's people who are running businesses quietly and some not quietly in Columbus. So sometimes we see applications after...
After the fact.
After the fact. So I kind of think we need to leave ourselves some room of why are they here? Are they new? Is it without, after the fact, kind of, too? Because we get into that water, where I think it's important that we know what, what, all the facts. Do you follow me?
I understand what you're saying, but what are you suggesting be done? So they, because the issues are complaint-driven in Columbus?
Some of them.
Or, yes, some people just come in and apply, some people are doing whatever they're doing, and then the neighbors...
Right. I guess what I'm saying is if we set a precedent of two years, and we, and we already know that we have application and we have complaints, and we're, they're coming into compliance, yay, so maybe two years is too long if we already have. So I'm just kind of, I just want to throw that in there as, I don't mean to throw a curveball, but it's something we should consider.
Mr. Mayor and council, I think the reason the code is written up to five years is so you can take into account those facts when someone's coming in. Are they coming in to essentially legalize a business that's been there? Or are they coming in ahead of time to get a business legally approved before it started? So that's why, at least in my view, the code gives you that latitude for, you know, any amount of time, up to five years. So I think you can, I think you can undertake the direction, if it's consensus of the council, you can adopt a motion tonight that would establish a practice going forward, including the applications if you decide tonight, that are on the agenda, that would establish a two-year initial term, and then, you know, they're obviously free to, to reapply for a five-year after that.
Thank you. So everyone, do we think one year, two years, three years? Denny, you say two.
I say two.
Janet?
I would be, I mean, I, I guess I prefer one, but I'm, I'm open to two.
Kelly?
Two would be fine with me.
Two years, two's good.
I, I want one, one question answered. This $1,500 in escrow, does everybody usually pay part of that? In other words, there's always something that has to be?
Yes, there's, there's always a plenary part drafted for each application, so there's always costs associated to any application that comes in. Otherwise, the city would be paying for the cost.
I guess my, my thing is, is that, okay, we do it for two years, and I think it's fine, the $200, I understand, but I think, you know, $1,500 over again, you know, is onerous, going to be rolled over, or how do they get it back so that they can give you $1,500 more, you know, for their five-year?
So are you saying that, so if someone comes in, they pay the $200, that covers city costs and city staff? Then you have a consultant that's going to draft a planner's report. So either the business owner pays for it because he's asking for the permit, or you take it out of the general fund and all the citizens of Columbus pay for it?
No, I think that they should pay out of the $1,500. What I'm saying is that they paid the $1,500 at, at the two-year application, and they come back and they're going to get a five-year. Okay, so then do they get that refunded, or is it rolled over? Any, anything that they have not, had to have spent on their...
So it's refunded, it's, so when they apply the first time, the money is, as soon as we get all the bills from the consultant, then we, we issue a refund check. So in two years, when they apply again, then they would come in again, pay the $200. So we don't, we don't keep a running tally on anyone, so money that's not spent is, is returned.
Good.
That satisfy your answer? Sure, question? So would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move that we adopt a practice, is that the correct term, practice? To limit first application of an IUP to two years, with the option for them to come back after two years and apply for a longer period of time.
Second. End discussion. Do you want to say limit it to two years, or because of the discussion of the one year, if you really wanted to do just a one year for something special?
Not more than?
Not more than, that's, yeah, that's what I meant by limit. Yes, not more than two years.
Anything more to add to this great discussion? Then, let's call for a vote. Do we have a second? Okay, yep, call for a vote, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, it passes. So now, we're back to the Planning Commission members, if you haven't fallen asleep, and we'll take number eight, a, a motion of the, or of an IUP residential zone district for Daniel Wallock III at 16915 Potomac Street, pages from, four to 11. Okay? Introduce yourself to everybody.
My name's Ron Anagraff, and I'm on the Planning Commission, the chairman. And last Wednesday, February 20th, at 2019, we had an open public hearing on Wallock Lawn and Snow Incorporated. The business was represented by the owner, Dan Wallock. Dan explained his business, that he had five bobcats, a bobcat trailer, three lawnmowers, two trailers, and two trucks that he was storing on the property. Should be known that, it's my understanding that he has only lived at this property for a short period of time. So I don't think he's been running a business there for years. I think it just kind of happened, or whatever. His hours for his landscaping, in the summer hours, would be 7:00 AM to either 4:00, 5:00, 6:00, or 7:00 PM at the latest. And that's just to get the equipment back in on the property. Winter hours is on-call, in other words, like we have a snowstorm at 2:00 in the morning, they're out the door. So that's, it should be noted that the bobcats are on-site in Minneapolis. They're not in his full barn on Potomac during this period of time. So we talked about bringing home stuff, items, some of his landscaping, like leaves and stuff like that. He does bring leaves home, and he puts them in a compost pile behind his house, which is not seen by the public. When we opened up to the public hearing, we had his neighbor, Mr. John Williams, step up, the only person that talked that night, and he had nothing but good things to say about his neighbor. And I come down to believe that if there was an issue, he'd walk over there and tell them. I don't think he'd be coming up to the city to complain. He talked about his business growing in the future, and if it did grow in the future, that he would, he has enough land to build another building in the back. We did discuss and tell him that it's supposed to be an invisible business, and all the equipment had to be stored inside. Now, we had a little question on the size of the building, because his, whoever drew up the plans came up with a building that was a little different than what he put down, but it's 38 by 32 on the scaled, whatever it is, drawings he's got here. Anyway, I asked him, or was asked of him, if he could store that amount of equipment inside there, and he said he... inside there, and he said he would get it in there. At first, he started talking about half the building, but now it's the whole building, when we get down to the end of the, did I do it? We also brought up the deal about if he read TKDA findings of facts and the recommendations, and he read them here, which maybe we should talk about that, Elizabeth, are they supposed to get this on email, or?
Yes.
Okay, if I'm right, he didn't get it, did he?
He didn't.
He did? He just didn't read it? Oh, okay. Well, he read it here, at, at the thing, and he had no issues on any of the items, the 13 items of findings of facts, or the nine recommendations by TKDA. After we closed the hearing, we had a discussion, and we took a vote, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend or approve, approval of the IUP and send it back to you. At that time, I think we were talking five years. That was mentioned. So I don't know where you stand now with the.
In your additions on A2 of your agenda packet, you'll find the recommendations of the Planning Commission. The underlined, the underlined in the conditions are edits that I made to the conditions as a result of the discussion by the Planning Commission.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, just one quick typo. Condition number eight says that the IUP may be revoked by the city upon property notice in public hearing, it should be proper notice. Just a small change that'll get reflected in the minutes.
In item number one, it talks about the term, so it states that the term of the IUP shall, shall be five years from the date of issuance, and I believe the chairman of the Plas, Planning Commission is, that's what he's referring to, as their recommendation was for five years.
So that was their recommendation, but we have decided we'll start with the two. So we simply cross out the five and put a two?
That's correct. Based on your prior action, that would become two rather than five.
Anyone see anything else of concern?
Are we going to make sure he can get all of that equipment into his pole barn? Because that sounded like that was a big question mark. I mean, isn't that be a contingency?
During our discussion, I explained to Dan that he needed to put all of the equipment inside the building, and I think during the public hearing, he, he did recite that, yes, I remember Elizabeth telling me that I needed to put all my equipment in, but as he explained that he had, I believe it was two trailers at the side of the building, and then he did have another site that he was storing some of his equipment in, but I think that in this case, the conditions specifically say that he must keep his equipment inside the building, and in this case, he identified the 32 by 38 as the building that he was going to store the equipment in. He did not identify the existing 24 by 24 garage. So, and, and that's one of the things I think that in our new checklist, it would be, it would be, it would be good for someone who's doing a compliance inspection to know exactly what buildings he's going to store things in. So in, in condition number six, I put all equipment and activities associated with the business shall be kept inside, and then I just put a note here, the 38, or the 32 by 38 accessory building identified on the site plan, because during the hearing, that is the building he identified he was going to put his equipment in. He did identify that he was going to have a compost site in the backyard, and realistically, you wouldn't be able to put a compost site in, inside the building. He indicated that it would be screened by the neighbors, and it would just be leaves.
Mm-hmm.
I think he said that compost site was for his personal use, though, for his garden. So it wasn't a business kind of, he was just bringing it home.
Right.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, should that have been addressed in a little more tightly? But of course, it's for his own garden, if he has 10,000 acres of corn, but remember, we had all the, all of the issues on Lake Drive, and somebody did a big compost thing. That could have been, you know, the size of it perhaps, or so the neighbor starts getting a whiff in August of three dump truck loads of grass clippings and all of that.
And, and I agree, the, the complaints that we received there were odor-driven, and, and when you compost, if you have many leaves, we didn't really talk about how much leaves, whether they were, he was putting them in rows, whether they were going to be heated, you know, because those leaf piles become very hot, and that's the whole point of how they decompose. But if you, if they're in plastic bags, and they're, they're not turned, they, they definitely have an odor, and we did have a problem on Lake Drive with compost piles, because it almost smells like ammonia, and, and so I was thinking the same thing, but if, if we think it's more of on a personal use, that he brings them home and he uses them in his own garden, that's on a very small scale versus the, the Lake Drive operation was huge. I mean, there were rows, and the rows were very tall, and they had to turn them weekly in order to compost them, and they had to monitor the heat of the piles, because there was, apparently they can get quite warm.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think the conditions address that, so all activities, all equipment and activities associated with the business shall be kept in the 38 by 32 accessory building. So in other words, he wouldn't be able to compost in connection with the business, because that wouldn't be located within the building, so it would have to be personal use.
He did talk about turning it over, though, as you said, Elizabeth, that he'd go out with a Bobcat and keep turning it, so.
Anyone else have anything different? If not, I'll ask her a vote.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I recap the changes?
No.
For the record, to make sure that we've got them. So on page A2, under the conditions, the term of the IUP shall be two years from the date of issuance. Number six, we're adding 38 by 32 accessory building, as identified on the site plan, and in number eight, we're just correcting the word property to read proper notice in public hearing.
I will also add, Mr. Mayor, that number 10 is one that I added. It said the city will conduct a compliance inspection annual, annually after issuance date. If you feel that the two-year term will accommodate any issues with compliance, then we could certainly do that and eliminate it. This, I felt that indicating and putting them on notice that we were going to annually inspect, we felt that that would motivate them to keep their business-related equipment and activities inside the building.
I am not against keeping the compliance check, if they can do it properly, this applicant or anyone else, for one year, another year, if, and they showed that they're willing to do what is, what we ask. Anybody else have a problem with that? All right, so then, shall we take a vote?
Make a motion.
Okay, make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the CUP, or IUP, I mean, for two years, and recommendations, and change the property to, what are we changing it to?
Proper.
Proper.
Mm-hmm.
There's one other thing, wasn't there? Size of the pole building?
38 by 32, that's in condition six.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Any more discussion, anyone? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So then, this passes with a two-year term instead of a five-year, and would you like to, oh, do you have to read the, I'm sorry. Go ahead for the next one, for Michelle Whitney, please.
Okay, our second public hearing was Michelle Whitney on the business called Happy Trails Grooming, and that was at 7640 Crossways Lake Drive. Michelle Whitney was present and represented the business, even though, we'll have to go back to Elizabeth on this, the business is not in her name. So did that get straightened out?
So it, I, I have talked with the applicant, and it has been indicated to me that the business name has, the business was put in her name, and she has refiled the paperwork, so she will be the owner of the business and the owner and occupant of the home.
That's her niece?
Her niece will also live there, but Michelle Whitney has applied for the business in her name, and she will also be living in the house.
That was my mistake there, okay. Well, anyway, the, the, Michelle Whitney approached the Planning Commission and explained the operation is going to be operated out of the house. I don't believe that this is an ongoing business, this is a startup, and I don't know if it's a legal term or not, but it's kind of like a ma and pa deal. It's a dog grooming business, and the operation would be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and the location of it is inside the attached garage. There's a 12 by 12 room in there that's insulated, heated with water, and that's where the dogs would get groomed. The dogs will never leave the area, and only be outside when the owners are leaving or come arriving. The issue in the beginning was Michelle Whitney has a niece named Stephanie Coller, who lives at the residence and owns, was the owner's name on the business called Happy Trails Grooming. Michelle was in the same kind of principal business in Centerville and retired, and she just liked to groom a few dogs during the week, and maybe one to six clients a week, Monday through Saturday, 9 to 5. These are only phone appointments, this is not an advertisement, though she wants a sign on the side of her garage facing Crossways that would just distinguish that this is the location for Happy Trails Grooming. She did not talk about advertising like in the paper as a grooming business. Michelle is looking at doing this for about two or three years, and the way it sounds is that her niece is going to take the business into Forest Lake and open up a shop there. So it doesn't look like this is going to be a long-term business run out of the home. Ms. Whitney was given a copy of the TKDA report concerning the 14 items of findings of facts and 11 recommendations by TKDA, and she had no issues regarding the findings or recommendations. It doesn't sound like it's going to be a real neighborhood disturbance place, because if you go to the location, the traffic is louder than any dog could bark down there, so I don't think that'll be an issue. And as far as getting refuge from the dogs, it'll all go in the garbage whenever they have. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend an approval of the IUP and send it back to you, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, anyone have any issues that weren't discussed at all?
I have a question in signage. We talk about the, being on the, the structure, and, you know, we have a five-acre limit here, and a lot of the homes are not right on the road, and I know that she has in the past had a very unobtrusive sign closer to the road, not on, on the main drag there, but on Crossways, and I was wondering why we, we insist that she have a sign that can't be seen.
You know, the code calls for the sign to be on the building that the business is located in, and it doesn't, it doesn't call for any other signage because of the idea that it was being invisible, so that you wouldn't have a business sign in a residential district. So in this case, it would need a code change to place it anywhere else. Because it's a one-by-two sign, it's a very small sign.
Right.
That's allowed today.
Right, but I mean, you know, the one, I don't know that her sign out by the road was any bigger than the one-by-two, you know, it was just a very small. It's almost like a directional thing, you know, we were all very spaced out there and everything, so I just, I was just questioning that, and if it has to take, you know, a change to the code, then, okay.
You know, we can, what we can start to do is, there's, we do housekeeping for code changes, you know, on a, on a yearly basis, and so these smaller ones that we think that if there's consensus and you want to do, we'll just put in a house, more of a housekeeping one that's, you know, it's, it's, it's good to do, it's good practice, you're okay with it, it's, it's good policy, and we can certainly do that, rather than doing a whole code amendment process for something small like that, but we can certainly do that and keep notes, if, if everyone agrees.
Anyone else have anything to add?
I love the details on the drawings that she put forth, it was real, real nice.
If not, how about a motion from someone in a second, please? Who wants to make a motion? Billy, Jim?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation in passage.
Mr. Mayor and Council, then the term would be again two years, and we'll catch the same typo in condition 10, instead of property notice, proper notice.
So who? Second.
Any more discussion, anyone? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If not, it passes. Anything else to comment on from your meeting last Wednesday?
No, but I think it's good that you get the two-year deal, you know, it's kind of nice to have something, to go back on people. So if somebody's got a five-year one now, they come in and it's just automatic, five years?
Yeah, they would come back to the, to Elizabeth, and she'd set, set up a hearing.
I think, I think the Planning Commission and Council has, still has the discretion of up to five years. So yes, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be automatically five years, it would, they would still have the discretion to say anything up to five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Council, at this time, we're finally down at number nine, and it's public open forum. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the board? And seeing no one, we'll move on to letter D.
Is the Stoneville Club, are they here for something on the?
They're on the agenda.
Yep. And they're down at, under the attorney report. So engineer report, number 10.
Yes, I have a couple items on the report this evening. The first one is the Hornsby Street feasibility study, and we discussed this at the council work session, but this is the idea of improving Hornsby Street south of 97 down to 145th. It's about a mile section of roadway, and bringing that road into a 10-ton type roadway. The feasibility report has three options that we went over. The existing roadway is 11 or 12-foot lanes with one foot or so gravel shoulders. We came up with three different options. Option A would be to put back 12-foot lanes with four-foot gravel shoulders. Option B would have put, all options have 12-foot gravel lanes. Option B would also have four-foot paved shoulders with four-foot gravel shoulders, and option C would have eight-foot paved shoulders with four-foot gravel shoulders, which is what Hornsby Street, south of 97 was, that section was previously improved to. In real round numbers, the cost of those three options, we are estimating at 1.5 million, 2.2 million, and 2.9 million, respectively, for the three different options. We also have a tentative, very tentative schedule, that if option B or C is the council's choice, if this goes forward, we would likely be looking at 2020 construction due to possible, there might be some possible wetland impacts in a couple locations with widening the roadway. So at this time, we're looking for you to accept the report, and, because I'm not asking at this time, you know, to authorize preparation of plans and specs, I think there's some financial discussions that you had wanted to have yet, but this would just be to accept the report as is, or if you have any comments, any changes you'd like to make to it.
I have a question, Dennis, please. So you say would, wouldn't it be this coming season, 2019, it would be?
It would be designed this summer, fall, and then bid over next winter and constructed summer 2020.
Okay, and also you mentioned the wetland impacts that? Okay, and also you mentioned the wetland impacts that everyone in Columbus is so aware of. Is it a large amount or a small amount, or?
It's not a large amount, there's an area where there's some wetlands on the east side that come up to the roadway, and then maybe some of the ditch areas as well.
And that has to be mitigated for, or is there any kind of program for safety?
Most likely it would have to be mitigated for, most typically.
But a small amount, a quarter acre, half acre?
Yeah, we haven't come up with an acreage, but it's, it's, it's definitely not, you know, the majority length, it's, it's probably in that quarter acre range if I had to throw out a number right now.
And that's not included in the, the dollar figures?
That's part of the overall cost.
It is part of it, okay.
But the wetlands mitigation isn't part of the option A, is that correct?
Right, with option A, the road's not being widened that much to where we would not have impacts to the wetlands, or very minimal.
Mr. Mayor, I know that there was a question earlier on section six, on the financial, financing of the improvements, and I know during the workshop, we talked about coming back with some options on what financing would be possible, and what implications that would be if we did general obligation bonds as far as payment plans, and then having the option to look at more of a hybrid type of funding schedule. In other words, we would maybe take some from the maintenance fund, maybe some from the TIF funding that we have opportunity for on a very small scale, and in this particular case, under the financial improvement section, it indicates that it's proposed that the project are constructed with general funds, and that special assessments to adjacent properties are not proposed, and I think the council would feel, they feel that maybe we should have still some of, all of the opportunities on the table. I'm not sure of, of the language that we could put in there, in other words, so that we would say, we would look at a hybrid, that maybe there is a component of special assessments or developer fees, or some sort of opportunity to use multiple, multiple, multiple funding sources, and I'm not sure of the language, but maybe you have some possible language to include there.
Yeah, if it's your desire to incorporate that, we can come back with some language that would leave more options.
Just so we don't exclude it, whatever it would turn out to be. But do we have to insert this now, or accept it and then?
I'm not sure if you would accept it administratively, or?
I, I think you can accept it with that concept, knowing that it'll come back as it refined. Essentially would give, I mean, we could do that right now, but it's essentially saying that you would look at a variety of funding sources, including general funds, special assessments, developer fees, and tax increment funds. So, I think that would, that would cover the range of options.
We just add that in?
I think you could add that in and, and accept it with that.
Could you repeat that?
Sure. It is proposed that the project be constructed with general funds, period, the city would also look at alternatives that would include special assessments, comma, developer fees, comma, tax increment financing, and?
City maintenance funds?
And city maintenance funds. I'll save you some paper, bring it back.
And the city maintenance funds I'm referring to is the, the capital improvement plan that we put away for money for Blacktop.
Would this be a good topic, another topic for a little workshop? Once you come back with these numbers?
Sure.
You know, spend an hour going through it, revisit why, why it should be done, or if it should be done, why it should be done, when it should have been done. It's a 40-year-old project that got kicked down the road, but also it's a lot of money, it's a lot of work. I'd like everybody to really feel comfortable, whatever the decision is, but that makes me think maybe a little workshop?
Okay.
In the future.
Dennis, part of that is a 10-ton road now, isn't it, the part we just redid a year or two ago?
The gnarly piece adjacent to 97, yes.
How far down is that?
It goes about a quarter mile through the city property, 40.
To Dan Mike's corner?
Yep.
Thank you. So?
Oops.
Yeah, he's right there.
Anyone have anything else? And?
They want this replaced.
If not, would someone please make a motion?
I can make a motion to stop the feasibility, stop the Hornsby reconstruction with additions that Bill put in the records.
And is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It passes. Dennis, number two, Ziggler Water Tank, everyone pages 52 to 56.
Yeah, you should have a memo in your council packet for, it's combined, it's two, I'll call them separate projects, but yet they're related, so it's all in one, and I'll just give you a brief overview of what we had discussed previously. I also have Matt Ellingson from our office here, in the green shirt there, he's our water systems engineer, if you have any very specific questions about the improvements. The, the first portion is the Ziggler Water Tank, and I'll call it phase two, we've done some work to it already, the, the mechanical work, if you will, and the realignment of the water main, and the second phase would finish the electrical improvements and some tank modifications that remain, and that's the first number you see in the memo with the one quote that was received for $65,200. And the second piece of the project is more of the system-wide SCADA improvements that would allow, you know, all the, the different existing components of the water system to, to function together, and we had two quotes for that one, you can see they were fairly close and in control. Inc. had the slightly lower bid, and they've done a lot of the work in the city, so staff is familiar with them. So, what we're recommending is that you can take these in two separate motions to approve these quotes that were received, one for the Ziggler Water Tank Phase Two, and one for the SCADA improvements, and on the top of the second page is kind of a summary of the financial implications, the overall cost of the project for the construction and engineering, we're estimating to be around $174,000. The city has $136,000 in their HRA balance, so the remainder would be funded out of connection charges. There's a history here of the project, but if you have any questions, let me or, or Matt know.
Does anyone have any questions, or engineer? But we need to make two separate motions?
Yes, as we have it laid out, the first motion would be to award the Ziggler Water Tank conversion Phase Two, electrical improvements to EMI.
So moved.
EIM for, I'm sorry, for $65,200.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion, anyone? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes.
And the second motion would be to award the SCADA system improvements to In Control for $79,154.
So moved again.
Second? And it's seconded. Any more discussion, anyone? And if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it passes. Anything else for us?
We would anticipate these improvements occurring in April and May timeframe, and by the end of May.
If it quits snowing.
Yeah, they can be done.
So, that would be finished?
Right.
All done by?
End of May.
End of May. Well, that's finally, that's good.
That's all I had.
Thank you. And then next up, we will have our number 11, the attorney report, with two items, one is the discussion of the lighting ordinance interpretation, and then also the Rice Creek Trail Association request for a permanent trail alignment. Mr. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. At the last meeting, we were asked to render, do some review of the code and render an opinion on the, what is essentially the lighting ordinance. There have been concerns about glare, direct glare, and nuisance light. Since the term direct glare wasn't defined in the code, we took a, kind of a common understanding, which means harsh, uncomfortably bright light, so, but we also went back and looked at the provisions, because I kind of did it on the fly at the last meeting, so with a little more time, I want to point out that there's really two components to the lighting ordinance. One is that there's a nuisance provision, which says that essentially if you have direct glare or light from private fixtures exceeding one foot candle at the property line, that's considered to be in violation of our code, and that would be treated as a nuisance. So, I, I broke those down as two separate standards, but when I reread it, the and follows the or, and so you would read it as light or glare that exceeds one foot candle as measured at the property line. And in reviewing this, it made some sense, because we've been saying, probably since the day we were hired, that we need measurable standards, and so it doesn't make sense that you would have something that would not be measurable at the property line. So, glare would be something that would be observable at the property line at what foot candle, and therefore measurable. At least that's our, our read of the ordinance, and it makes it easier for enforcement purposes as well. The other point that was made at the meeting is that somehow this would only be applicable if you're installing new lighting. So, the new lighting provision is a separate provision that says that all newly installed, repaired or replaced fixtures shall include cutoff luminaires, and shall be direct away from residential property and public streets, in such a way that residential structures shall be shielded from direct rays of light, and so as not to exceed an intensity of illumination greater than, again, one foot candle as measured at the property line. So, both, both of these provisions have the same standard, one foot candle is measured at the property line, one provision, new fixtures, says as you're replacing and repairing those fixtures, you need to have a cutoff-type fixture that prevents glare. The other is a nuisance provision that says if you're going to have one foot candle at the property line, either from direct light or from private fixtures, that that could be considered a nuisance and, and could be enforceable. So, so the bottom line is, the city doesn't have to wait until someone installs a new fixture to deal with nuisance. If there's a direct, if there's direct glare, and it's reaching a level of one foot candle at the property line, which is a pretty high standard, then, then we can act on that, and we have the enforcement capability to do that. What it would require is a complaint from a property owner, and then a measurement of that light at the property line, obviously at night, you know, when you can measure that, that light. So, I think that's given, given a little more time than just trying to respond on the fly here a couple weeks ago. It's a sensible approach, it's consistent with how it's written, and it gives the city enforcement, we don't have to wait until people install new lighting to deal with enforcement.
All right, so, Mr. Counselor, so what you've just said is, if I'm looking at your light, my eyes are bad, and it's glaring, I say, boy, that's glaring, it can be measured at the property line?
Correct.
And if it's under one lum, one lumen?
One foot candle.
Or one foot candle, maybe it's, maybe it's irritating me, but it's, that's the ordinance. It's legal, that's the way it is.
Correct. We've upset it, we've set it objective standards, and we, we try and do this as much as possible in all of our enforcement provisions, all of our code compliance, we try and make it measurable, so it isn't, you know, whether it's decibel readings for sound or foot candles for lighting, we want to make it an objective standard as much as possible, so that we're not getting into an argument over somebody's subjective view of the light.
Has anyone else got any questions or discussion on the issue?
Oh, it makes sense, measurable from the corner, so we need something we can put our teeth into and measure, actually.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the, the permit for the Rice Creek Trail Association, this is the snowmobiling association. We now have a more complete permit that has been submitted, that's on page 57 of your council packet, I just have two comments. We can wait for the gentleman to come forward. We're starting to get to be regulars, right?
That's because there's so much snow, yes. May we have your name for the?
Yeah, I'm Bill Princeton, the president of the Rice Creek Trail Association in Circle Pines.
I'm John Vouts, I'm a member of the Rice Creek Trail Association.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, the, at the last meeting, we discussed a condition that would have the city reviewing the permit following each snowmobiling season, so what I would propose to do, and if the, if the minutes taker could just follow along on condition number one, following the word landowners, we'd insert, "The city shall review the permit following each snowmobiling, snowmobiling season for damage to public or private property, which may require repairs or mitigation." So, that would be the ad from the last meeting. In condition number four, it says the landowner shall have the right to close said right-of-way during an emergence, any emergency, with the approval of the sponsor. We would strike with the approval of the sponsor. Obviously, if there's an emergency, the public needs to be able to deal with that, with or without approval of the sponsor. So, we would strike those words. And then the final thing that we would just note is, we received a certificate of liability insurance, which identifies commercial liability. We want, we have a couple comments, these are administrative comments, we'll work with you to resolve those, we need in the description of the insurance, we need the city listed as an additional insured, and we need full coverage, including, what was, what were you looking for?
Damage.
Damage, property damage, correct. So, those are two items, those are comments that we can work with you offline through Elizabeth, just to get this updated.
I thought you already had that.
It, this, this insurance policy only identifies general liability, but no damage, and then it doesn't list us as additionally insured in the endorsement. So, I'm, either you have an endorsement, or you're in the description, it usually says, you know, I mean, the legal description of what the insurance covers, and it, there's no description in it. So, what happens then is when you, when you go to file a claim, if there's no description, then they, then there's some question as to whether it was really covered.
We can handle that administratively, though, those are changes that your insurer should provide on.
We've never, never had an issue or had a situation where it would cover damage to property.
Well, we, we would like it to cover damage to property, since you're going over the road.
And who, and who's going to establish what damage, how, how do you establish damage?
So, my understanding, my understanding is that you were going to put mats down for the curb, for the sidewalk, and that there was specifically that, if there was, you know, I mean, damage to the, to the sidewalk, that the, the Trail Association would be, that was the whole idea of the insurance, that you would be able to, to repair any damage to the sidewalk? Because we talked about the mats that you were going to put down?
Yeah.
So, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that's what we, that's what we talked about the last thing.
Yeah, we agreed to put mats down.
Yeah, so unless there's an objection to those changes to the certificate, that can be handled administratively. So, I, I think we're ready to approve, if the council's comfortable, we're ready to approve the permit as amended.
Anyone like to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the permit as amended.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Okay, could we receive a copy of that?
Do you want the, the copy of this, or after we sign it?
After you sign it.
Okay, yep.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you out in the snow. So, the next issues we have going on would be the mayor and city council reports. Jenny, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Shannon?
I'll just report on behalf of the Personnel Committee that we're still conducting interviews. I think we'll have a couple more next week for the Planning Commission, so hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll be able to come forward to, with a recommendation to fill those last two spots.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing.
I attended the meetings for the Sunrise River
not sunfish, carp, in the lakes, in Linwood primarily. And then I also attended just now the Fall Fest meeting, and the Fall Fest meeting is humming along, and it sounds like there's going to be some exciting stuff coming up. And they have also set definite dates so that more than two of us on the council can be there and, and be part of that festivities, planning.
And I had one thing, we talked about the technology quarter that we, Elizabeth and I went to. I also had my first meeting and tour with El Newman, the Fair Chief of Forest Lake in Columbus. We looked at all the equipment, and he showed me all his plans, he showed me the new trucks we're going to have to buy, pictures of the new trucks, et cetera, et cetera. And then he said, Elizabeth, he would be getting a hold of, you are sending out possible dates for the first board meeting?
Yes.
Or maybe you have already, but?
I have not received any dates yet.
Should be coming. So, and that's it for that. Public Works, thank you for keeping the roads safe and snow-free as best we can. Public Information, Jessica?
No report, but thank you for taking a look at the lighting ordinance.
Yeah? Will that help?
Yes.
All right. Elizabeth, City Administrator's report?
I have one, one item onto my report, and that is, I had a discussion today with Hila Mays. She is the person that is drafting our comprehensive plan. We went over the, the letter that we received from Met Council, and she's done some work already on the more technical items. And so as we discussed what the next steps were, she's recommending that we meet, and I had her hold the next workshop date, which is April 3, because we've already booked the March workshop date, as a time for the council to have an opportunity to talk with her through the comprehensive plan changes. And what she identified was, the Friday before, she would have the draft, and all the changes would be in red, and then there would be a policy discussion about the mixed use, and we were going to place the residential component to establish mixed use designations. And the only thing we had questions were, was really about the date, and then when the discussion would be with the Planning Commission. So my suggestion is that we take it up on April 3, from 4 to 6. The council will have an opportunity to talk with Hila. She'll give a little bit of background, because there are some of you who haven't really been through that process, and so she said she would give you a little bit of background, go through the incomplete letter, go through the changes, and then talk about the policy, policy decisions. Take a break after that, for like, that hour, and then we'll make the, the Planning Commission also a workshop, and then the Planning Commission then could have a presentation from Hila, and then continue the mixed use designation and other things that we need to clarify in order to resubmit. When I asked her about a timeframe, because that was one of the questions I was asked about the incomplete letter, while we did not get a specific date from Met Council as to when we should reapply, she did feel that we should, you know, address the issues timely, but not rush it, make sure you're all comfortable with it. But we did commit to the timeframe, the deadline was last year, so she said we should get it in. And then if you decide through the process that there are other things you want to address, we can certainly do an amendment right after, or six months from that time, if you want to address more specific issues that have, that are not identified in the incomplete letter.
I have a question, Elizabeth. Is, and I know I've kind of sitting through meetings on it, is it a big thing, how big of a thing is it to, to make an amendment? Is more work?
You know, for a small, for a small amendment, it's just more about process and paper, because you do have to hold, you know, public hearings and send out notices to the public that you're making amendment and circulating it. But we see them a lot from other communities, when they're very small amendments, you know, they send it out with a sheet that's attached, just check the box if you have comments. And so it does go very quickly. It's, it's timely, because it's a policy decision, so it's more work on the Planning Commission Council's part, but there's not a lot of writing part, because the big sections of the comp plan we're doing now, you generally don't make a lot of, you don't make a lot of amendments in the parks section, unless you're doing some, a parks project, because there's five components to this comp plan. Really, a lot of the, the amendments come in the land use section. So when you're only amending a very small section in land use, it goes very quickly, especially with the other jurisdictional review.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, with the response back to the Met Council, do we have to recirculate that, then, to the other municipalities for review, or what's the process for responding to their concerns?
We do not. They consider, they considered it incomplete because they felt that we didn't address the laundry list of issues in that letter, but they don't feel that we have to go back through the, the process. I think from what Hila indicated is, if we deviated from the letter, then she said, yes, we would have to go through that process, which is why she recommended that if there are changes, that we get through this process, complete this one, because it's, it's the entire 2040 comprehensive plan that we're submitting, and then just take certain chunks that you would like to address on a much smaller basis.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then, if not, number 16, we have a closed meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I think you want a motion to set that.
Oh, set the date for the workshop? Anyone want to move to set the date of April 3 for the workshop from 4 to 6 p.m.?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, now we're down, finally, we're down here. We'll have a closed meeting discussion in a minute. Or do we have to adjourn first, or we adjourn after?
Yeah, you, you make the announcement, and then you adjourn, clear the chambers, and then you go to closed session.
So we'll have a closed meeting discussion on the northeast quad land, which we just saw that on. And so I need a motion to adjourn, and then we will?
You're not adjourning the meeting, you're closing it.
Oh, just closing?
Yep.
Do I need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out on a cold night again. It's only 8:30. Where's my calendar?